To help educate our children, represent them as best as we can. So they will have a promising education that will impact lives, not only this generation, but a generation to come. I ask you Father God that you continue to allow us to work together in this school system. Let us work better, let us work more stronger, more cohesively, and let us always strive to exemplify love. I ask you tonight, Father God, that we will hear many things about our system, but I hope that the end goal is to make it better for our children of today and tomorrow. And I ask Father God that you will let us be doing things feasible in your eyesight, and I'm always reminding of our church covenant. Be slow to take offense, but always ready for reconciliation, and mindful of the rules of our Savior to secure it without delay. So whatever's going on in our world tonight, let us have the embodiment that we will reconcile whatever is wrong or what perceived to be wrong to make it better for all lives in our school system. And I ask now, Father God, that you will bless all of our leaders, bless our superintendent, board of education members, certified and classified staff, and all the students who are out there anticipating the call to come back to school on August the 7th. We're working hard and diligently to make that happen. And Father God, when we do these things, we hope that we do it in decency and in order that we will always be about our Father business to please you. This prayer we ask in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, in Jesus Christ's most holy and righteous name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Well, everybody's got a copy of the agenda? Do we have any, uh, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Stand there.
Say, say, on this press discussion. All in paper. All right, Dr. Leece.
All right. Thank you, board members. Appreciate you being here tonight. We have quite a bit of business to get through. First off, you'll find the minutes from the previous board meeting. Y'all want to take a moment to read those and... If there's no questions or changes to the minutes, I would ask the board that we place those on the consent agenda for the regular meeting following this work session. Financial report? This is a monthly financial report. First document that you have is the July 1, 19 through May 31, 2020. You'll see the beginning fund equity, July 1 of 19. We had $14,950,260.85. And at the end of May, we have $20,764,167.04. I will say that that's up with the buzz of schools. It was, uh, we've been able to reduce a little bit of expenditure, which we're gonna need if we'll talk about in a few minutes. Any questions about that document? The second one is the May comparison report. This gives us a snapshot of our end of month fund equity as compared to the previous four years. You'll notice that, uh, the $20,764,167.04 at the end of month, May. If you work to the left, you'll note that we've been increasing our fund balance each year in anticipation of a downturn. And I want to thank the board for taking that approach. All right, if there's no questions about that document, we'll move to number three, which is the detailed monthly report. Ms. Young, you have any commentary on this report?
Yes, sir. This report, um, details our revenue and our expenditures. The first part is our revenues, and it shows our local, state, and federal revenues that we receive. And you can see that our total revenues through May are $61,257,829.11. The expenditures is the second part, broken down by function. And the end of May, the total expenditures is $55,443,922.92. And so that we end the month of May with a fund equity of $20,764,167.04.
Any questions about that document? Then we will move on to the East Flos, the May East Flos report. And, uh, this was one that, uh, I'll be honest, going into the COVID situation and the economy, the downturn that we've seen nationwide and the reduction in revenue at the state level, we were a little, I know all of us were concerned about what the Flos revenue would look like. And this is our first month of collections on our new Flos. So we're starting out with a really good month.
Look at our last Flos, and that's the highest bid we've had in the last six years.
Still, still tax on toll payment.
Like I say, online groceries. But still, I expect that, I expected that to be a lower number, so I'm definitely pleased to see that it's hanging there. But maybe it's a sign of, you know, continuing our revenue like we need.
And, uh, that's, that's a good sign. We've got some, some big projects going on. Uh, you'll see over on the right side of that report, the CHS renovation project. As you know, uh, we did bond money to be able to, to go ahead and do that work, about six and a half million dollars worth of work out at Coffee High School that's going on. And I was talking with Dr. Cummins today, the principal of the high school, and he said that many people don't realize the scope of the work going on in Coffee High, but it is, it is being totally renovated on the inside. The paint is just about complete throughout the whole interior of the building. The ceiling grids have been replaced in probably about half of the building. I'd say at least a quarter of it has the new ceiling tiles up and everything's ready to go. There's a lot of work left to be done. They hung most of the air conditioning units. I spent a lot of time out there today, walking around that project just to see where they're at. And, uh, I think almost all of the wall hung units around the whole building have been hung. So the project is coming along. Two weeks ago, I was really nervous, uh, wondering about the start of school and that building. It's gonna be tight. They're gonna have to really press to, to get us there, but it looks like they, they had a meeting yesterday and the architect reported back that all the subs and the contractor feels like they can, they can be ready. So, uh, when our students enter Coffee High School, it's gonna look like a totally different building on the interior. So, uh, really exciting. The lighting, we put the, uh, LED lighting in throughout the building and a fresh coat of paint throughout the building, new ceilings, and new air conditioning. So I think our students are really gonna enjoy it. The gym floor was delivered yesterday, so they'll be start putting down the gym floor next week, and, uh, it's coming together. So a lot of work going on at Coffee High School. You know, on our previous Flos, we had the Performing Arts Center, and I know that's the big question, where are we at with that? They are, they have a little bit more tile to lay. They had a, uh, it's gonna take a little more tile than they anticipated. And the carpet, there was a little more waste than they anticipated, had to make more cuts than they thought they would. And so there's a little bit of tile work that had to be done and a little bit of carpet left to lay. And, uh, they're, they've got the stage, the hardwood laid down on the stage, and they're ready to finish that. They were sanding that today, getting ready to put the coat on, uh, the finish on the stage. But, uh, it's gonna be a beautiful facility. I think all of Coffee County is gonna, gonna be able to enjoy that for years and years to come. So it's gonna be a nice addition to Coffee High School. And, uh, we painted Eastside today. I was there today, walked through Eastside. The painting has been done on the interior of Eastside, and so, um, they'll be ready to start school. Their floors look great, the new coat of paint, so Eastside is coming along. Michael, is there anything else regarding those projects? All right.
Dr. Leece, were they able to get, um, in that for the concession saying the ventilators for the, um, French fries are in a grease, uh, oil to be fried?
No, ma'am, that was not part of the, was not part of the bid.
And I know you told me that y'all started checking to try and to...
We looked at it, but...
Said French fries is a big seller.
Yes, ma'am. They were, the contractors and the architect were very hesitant to, to penetrate the roof, uh, the roof on that gym has a, uh, a, uh, what do you call that?
Membrane, right.
It's a membrane, so if you penetrate it, there's a good chance you could have leaks later on, and, uh, but that's something...
Thought about building something right on the outside of it, um, or something that you could put, um, the grease fryers, the french fryers out on outside to fry.
Yes, ma'am.
You had thought about building that, so you're gonna get back with that.
Yeah, that's something we could probably do internally. We can, you know, look and see when they get done with the renovations, if there's a place we can do that.
Where would they need the outside? You're talking about like when you come in up under there or something?
Well, you know, right on the outside, um, down from the concession area, there's some doors there. They normally go out there and fry the fries there anyway, but, um, Dr. Leece had said something about considering building a shelter there where they can go under in case it rain. Like, you know, normally now if it rains, they are not able to fry the fries because of the rain. But, um, he was talking about getting a shelter there in case of rain, or what they can set up under this, you know, shelter right on the outside of that door there.
Yes, ma'am.
I know we had also, this was, we'd also talked about finding some products that'll work without needing a ventilation system and getting them, just get some samples in and trying some things, so, so, a little work with the air fryer type, type products. And they come out just like where they deep fry fries, but we, I think that might be something to look at as well.
Yeah, I like my grease.
I agree with you.
I bought an air fryer and it, they work great. I should be took different, trying to get something, but, you know...
We'll, we'll work on something to try to make something happen. The, uh, so those are the projects that we've got going on in regards to East Flos, and, uh, collections are good. Once the Chick-fil-A goes next door, hopefully we'll see, uh, collections go up even more. All right. FY '21 budget, this is, uh, our annual budget adoption. We started working on this budget in, uh, February. We've been meeting the principals over the last five months and, uh, all the directors and staff. That's probably the biggest task of the year is development of the budget. So we've got a budget we're gonna ask the board to approve tonight. Are there any questions about the budget? We have, just as a side note, we revised this budget based on revenue projections from the state probably five different times. So a lot of work has gone into this. If you remember back in February and March, the governor was gonna put money for raises for all teachers across the state in budget as soon as the coronavirus hit, and they realized what the budget impact was gonna be, that was taken off the table. And then in April, they came back and said that we would have a 14% reduction in state funding. And fortunately, the state revenue has not been as, as bad as they were thinking it was gonna be. They reduced the 14% reduction down to 11%. And then last week, they made some additional changes that I think brings us in around 10% reduction in, in fund. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, but I, we've not noted that. It's 11%.
Oh, it's 11%. They had been real clear on, on where it goes from 11, but...
More than 11% caution.
That's the 6.1 million.
6.1.
Yes, sir.
And then we did receive the CARES funding, the federal stimulus funding for COVID, and we were able to cut that six and a half down to...
The CARES money totaled 2.6 million. So we use that for our general funds and our salaries and our benefits to offset that.
And you'll notice we've reduced that excess of revenues under expenditures to $2,895,486. And if you look back at our financial report that we discussed earlier, that's puts us in a position to be able to, to work through this time. Are there any questions about the budget? All right. If it pleases the board, we'll place the tentative budget on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. The next item is the Title I, Part A, school improvement. Ms. Miller was gonna be here to present that tonight, but she had her first grandchild yesterday, and so, uh, she asked if she could be excused tonight. Mama came home, uh, today with the baby, and so she wanted to be there when they came home, and so she's, uh, had on with, with new grandbabies, so... We received $75,000 for Westside school improvement money. They were identified as a Title I school improvement school. And you'll notice there we've included in the agenda the different schools from the different school systems, and you'll note that Westside received $75,000. This is information just so that the board understands that Westside will be receiving that funding. We need to be able to notate that in the minutes of our meeting that we presented that to board, and y'all are accepting it. So no action, but we're certainly not gonna send it back. All right. Bids. We have several bids for the board tonight. The largest is school nutrition. We have Ms. Dawn Lewis here tonight to describe the school nutrition bids, and we are asking the board to approve placing these bids on the July consent agenda. So we're not asking for approval tonight. We're gonna just, uh, if the board is okay with the bids, we will place them on the consent agenda for our July meeting, as we do from time to time with big purchases to give the board time to review the purchase. All right, Ms. Lewis, you wanna describe your bids?
Yes, the first one is a bid that has already been approved by the board. It is the produce bid, the bread bid, and the USDA commodity bid. Those bids were previously approved by the board in previous years, but we're just, for your information, we're asking that those, that we be allowed to roll those bids again? Sorry. The first item is the produce bid, the bread bid, and the USDA commodity bid. Those bids have been previously approved by the board, and we're just asking that we roll those for the 2021 year at the same terms and conditions which the board has already approved. Those bids are, were piggyback bids from Evans County, Lounes County, and Carrollton City's bids, so no changes there. Uh, the next bid is the big bid, it's the food bid. This was sent out for bid, and it was posted on our website and on the Georgia Procurement Registry, as well as sent to previous, to any vendor that requested the bid. This bid, the only bid submitted was by Williams Institutional Foods, and that bid is, covers two different ways. We bid this out covering the emergency feeding that we've had to do the last part of this year, and if we're in a normal school, school year. So it does look large, it's not what we will spend, but to cover us so that we can buy any products either way we have to feed, we bid it out this way. And Williams, like I said, was the only vendor who submitted a bid, and Atkinson County and McIntosh County will be piggybacking on our bid as well, which gives us more buying power than we piggyback with another school district. And that bid was for $6,027,570.70. The next bid was the paper and chemical bid. We had three vendors submit bids. Two were companies out of New York who only bid on one to three items. Out of 64 items, Williams was the only company who bid on all but one of the items. They bid on 63 items, and that bid came in at $118,442.40. And that's for all the paper products and laundry detergent that we'll use during the school year. And that bid was also sent out, published on our website and on the Georgia Procurement Registry, and sent to previously requested vendors. The last bid is the milk bid. That bid was also published in the same venues. We had three vendors. The lowest vendor, as Chan has the breakdown there, the lowest vendor did not meet all of the terms and conditions for the bid, so the next lowest bidder was Williams Institutional Foods at $339,474.62 for milk for next school year. And you'll notice we have the half gallons, which looks kinda strange, but over the course of emergency feeding, we've been able to provide half gallons rather than our staff packing several little pots to go out for the emergency feeding. And that is all, Dr. Leece, unless anybody has any questions.
Board members, are there any questions about the food bids? Yes, ma'am, yes, sir. We will put, put this on the, the agenda for the July meeting for final approval. I know there, there was some talk about the standards and the, did they loosen it up of the standards so they could spice up the food a little bit? Did they, were they able to do that?
No, sir. They did not loosen the standards. They did today. You, um, Sunny Purdue extended the waivers so that if we did go into any emergency situations again, that we would be able to, to do the same type feeding that we've been doing since March. And those were approved today.
Well, I think those half gallons out, um, I think they work out better because some of the cartons out that they, um, had sent out. I know, uh, several people had talked about them being sour, you know, um, so, but I think that those, um, half a gallons, I think they're working out about better.
They're easier to transport too, as well.
Great. All right, well, board members, we will leave the school nutrition bids on the agenda for July and ask for approval at the July meeting. Painting of West Green Elementary School, uh, last month, the board approved the painting of the interior of Eastside Elementary School, and we're coming back to the board tonight to ask for approval for the low bid of painting the interior of, uh, West Green Elementary School. You'll notice that Giliard Painting Company came in at $22,500. We're asking the board to approve Giliard Paintings bid. Got Mr. Michael Spikes here, a, uh, maintenance director. Mr. Spikes, are there any, uh, comments or anything about the painting of West Green?
We've used, uh, West Green before. He actually painted West Green the previous time in the frame. Also, he's done work with some pillows with West Green.
You have two different contracts, um, Eastside school and one prepared for Westside?
West Green.
West Green?
Right.
Yeah, two different...
We built them out individually.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right, if it pleases the board, since we need to go ahead and let them get started, we've got about a month until, uh, teachers will be back in the building, we'd like the board to approve... We'd like the board to approve that bid tonight on the consent agenda at the regular meeting. Chromebook purchase for Westside. As I mentioned earlier, Westside was identified by the state as being eligible for school improvement money. So they are going to implement a one-to-one initiative with Chromebooks. And this is very timely, given the circumstances we've been facing. So the children in Westside will get new Chromebooks. We're asking the board to approve the bid for Chromebooks from CDWG. We have Dr. Newell here tonight, is there any information about these Chromebooks that the board?
These are, will be purchased from the State of Georgia contract. You see the state contract there. It's under, the licenses are under a source well contract, and the Chromebooks themselves are under a State of Georgia HP contract. So we're taking advantage of that statewide locked-in pricing for these.
What was the difference between this order and what we're doing with the same results?
CDW actually won the bid from the last two large orders we did. Those were, as you recall, we ordered those around about the time they shut down. We ordered a lighter one in response to a really good price. We got a smaller order, they cannot honor that price anymore with the supply the way it is, with the pandemic going on there. Very, very short supply, it's tough to get them in the U.S. right now. And he thought he could honor the price they bid before, but he wasn't able to do that. But the statewide contract is significantly lower than anything we could get on bid right now with the supply chain the way it is.
If it pleases the board, we would ask this to be placed on the consent agenda for a regular meeting. Have we gotten the Chromebooks we ordered last time?
Yes, they are. They are ready to reconfigure. We're waiting until a little closer, the school's starting to get them set up so we don't have to update them again. We've got them and we're prepared to get them deployed very soon.
Just a quick question, are we, are we one-to-one plus, or are we?
We're one-to-one plus right now, and keeping in mind that a lot of the 3,000-plus that went home with students back in the spring, those that have come back are, add, are very close to end of update with Google. So we really aren't sure what the remaining number of those is going to be. If we're going to use them as long as we can, technically using them, yes. So with that number, we're well over one-to-one with that, that number still in the pool.
Good, a lot of them come back in good standards, the Chromebooks that were laid out?
I was at CMS helping receive those that came back in. And in talking with the principals and staff of those schools, we found that they were very well taken care of. We actually had less damage than we do in a typical vet school. Very pleased they came back in great shape.
And in this, in this public meeting, I think it would be appropriate to thank our families that were issued the Chromebooks. Thank you for taking care of them. And they came back in really good shape, is what you've reported.
Yes, sir.
We want to thank our students and our families for taking care of that equipment to be able to continue using it.
Dr. Lee, I just want to clarify, this quote is over 131,000. And the allocation for the, the school was 75, so there is a difference.
Well.
This is a difference.
Yes. This is different than that. Okay, you referred to that one a moment ago, so I just want to make sure.
There were two allocations.
This is the one that we talked about last month.
Digital learning grant.
This is a digital learning grant. Total for the grant was 133,800. So this is the majority of that. Kim said there was another smaller item, I forget what that was on that graph, but this is the majority of that.
I thought so, but I wanted to clarify after putting this statement earlier.
Yes, ma'am. All right. The next item on the agenda is the Satilla Regional Library Board of Trustees. The term expired for Ms. Angela Booth and Ms. Cindy Papares, Papiaj. And they are willing to continue to serve as representatives from the school system. So we're asking the board tonight to approve Ms. Angela Booth and Ms. Papiaj's representatives from the Satilla Regional Library Board. And that would be placed on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. The next item on the agenda is the RISA contract for FY '21. This is our contract with Okie Penoke RISA. They provide us cooperative buying power. We buy materials from, through RISA. There's seven school districts in our RISA. And by being a member, we have that buying power through the RISA. And also, they provide service for copy machines, don't they? They provide service for copy machines. They also provide staff development. We get the bulk of our staff development that we have for our staff. A lot of that is sponsored through RISA. They provide training that's required for staff and certified and classified staff. So this contract has been the same since 1992. And we're asking the board to approve this contract with RISA, not Okie Penoke RISA. And that's the board will talk about, I guess, in the past, if they're the same. Yes, sir. The RISA's really got hit in the budget cuts. There's been a lot of talk about the Governor's Office of Student Achievement. I think they were cut from $16 million to $2 million in their budget. And they use that money through the Governor's Office of Student Achievement to support RISA's. So there is some sense of urgency with the RISA's to get that funding through GOSA. I hope that comes through, but it won't affect our contract anyway. School restart plan. Ms. Miller was going to present this tonight, but as I stated earlier, she was excused to be home with a new grandbaby. So I'm going to work through our restarting school update. And the focus of this presentation is to update the board and the community on our plans for restarting school in the fall. We held a series of planning meetings at the middle school auditorium with approximately 45 staff members from schools throughout the district, central office staff. And we broke the large group of 45 up into five working teams, school operations, facilities, wellness, instruction, and technology. And we worked on contingency plans for starting back to school. As you'll see on the right, we have a Plan A, and the Plan A is a traditional start plan. And we've been focused heavily on Plan A. Plan B is a virtual plan in case we had to experience another order by the governor in which we could not have school, could not have students at school. We've got a very comprehensive plan to cover that scenario. And then we had a Plan C, which is somewhat of a hybrid plan. Some of the students in the building, other students virtual. So we planned for each contingency, traditional school start, virtual school start, students learning from home, and then a hybrid-type plan. So a lot of thought went into this planning. I want to thank our team members, Dr. Banks was heavily involved with this. Nutrition, Ms. Miller was heavily involved, Ms. Clayton, Ms. Young, Dr. Newell, all of our principals. Chris Elrod, our safety director, was heavily involved with the planning. Mr. Spikes, maintenance facilities was involved. And then all of our principals, assistant principals, academic leaders from the buildings were involved with the plan. We've had teachers involved with the plan. And so we wanted to talk about our start. July 30th, pre-planning, we've had six pre-planning days. We needed two additional days to prepare all of the staff and to train on the various initiatives we'll have, including sanitation and sanitizing the buildings and teaching hygiene to our students, teaching safety in relation to the CDC guidance and the Georgia Department of Public Health guidance. So we will have six days of pre-planning. We'll have open house August 4th, 5th, and 6th. Open house will be scheduled a little differently than it has in the past. We'll be releasing plans for open house as we move into July. School will start on August 7th. Opening school for 2020 and '21. And we're going to follow the CDC and the Department of Public Health guidelines. We're using the guidance from both of those groups, CDC and Georgia Department of Public Health, to guide our decision-making. So we'll be referring to those agencies moving forward. We've been in close contact with the local Georgia Department of Public Health office. They've been giving us guidance every step of the way. I want to thank Dr. Dockry with the Department of Public Health and his staff for all the support they've been providing us in everything that we've been doing. So we'll continue to work closely with those groups. And also, the Georgia Department of Education, they released some guidance documents about two weeks ago that are very comprehensive. We'll be using those documents in addition. And they, those, those have been incorporated into our plan. So we're using their guidance as well as the CDC and the Georgia Department of Public Health. Our number one focus is safety of students and staff. That'll be the focus when we come back to school, is student safety and staff safety. Teaching and learning, we will be reviewing and planning with staff on virtual learning and the use of Google Classroom. The expectation will be that all of our staff will start up the year with the students on Google Classroom. And we'll be using Google Classroom in all of our schools as our platform for learning as we open up the schools, the students. We plan to open up a traditional school. They'll be in our buildings, but the teachers will be using Google Classroom to manage the learning in our schools. And we feel like that's very important in case we were to have to close down a classroom or close down a school or close down the district. We want to make sure everybody's well-versed in Google Classroom and all of our electronic learning platforms. And then remediation, of course, our students, when we start back on August 7th, they've been out of school for five months. So they're going to need remediation. So we're gonna, they're looking at power standards, those standards that the students must have. And if there's any gaps in their learning, we're going to focus on making sure that we're addressing those power standards through remediation. And then growth, we want all of our students, as we move into this school year, to move through the learning and the curriculum as they should and learn everything they're supposed to learn. Procedures for keeping a safe and healthy learning environment. Hand sanitizer, we have a lot of hand sanitizer already in the district. You have 260 gallons of hand sanitizer, Mr. Spikes. So we literally would have enough hand sanitizer to fill multiple 55-gallon drums. So we've got lots of hand sanitizer already. We are going to be working with a local vendor, they are a local vendor. We shopped around and we've got a local supplier, Supersource. They've got various products that we'll be using. They've got the Quat sanitizer, they've got the glass and surface cleaner, instant hand sanitizer, premium glass and surface cleaner that kills COVID, Quat sanitizer. And all the products that we're going to be using with that group. Ms. Lewis in nutrition is well-versed in the CDC guidance and has checked on all the products that we'll be using to ensure that they meet the CDC standards for handling COVID. So we feel like we're going to have plenty of clean supplies, plenty of hand sanitizer, those things that we'll need. In addition to those products, we'll also have backpack sprayers that will mist a decontaminating product onto surfaces that kills COVID-19. And we will be using those backpack sprayers in our buildings and on our buses. We'll be using a product that is approved by the CDC to kill COVID-19. We're installing, you want to describe, where are we going to put, we're going to have dispensers in the buildings, Mr. Spikes? Can you describe those?
Yes, for the dispenser, it'll likely be a meter device for disinfecting at a central location of each school for the teachers. And they will be able to put it in their spray bottle and spray their classrooms down and meet, you know. They'll be able to mix the right dilution rate into the spray bottle. Not a self-service.
In addition, we've, we've been working closely with Bag or Clean Company. They will be increasing their supplies and increasing the manpower in the buildings to be able to disinfect throughout the day. Hand washing, of course, we'll be talking and teaching our students proper hygiene and hand washing and ensuring that they understand the seriousness of it. And we'll be, we'll be reinforcing that with our young people. We'll be limiting shared spaces, workspaces, social distancing as much as possible in our buildings. Plan will be to limit movement of students, limit students eating in cafeterias. Each school has a plan. Ms. Lewis has been working with principals. Ms. Lewis, you want to describe any of the activities we'll be doing with nutrition?
We, we worked with each principal to get what plan they thought would be the best option for each school. And we are going to do a mixture depending on the school size. Some school sizes just extended their lunch period so that the stu, all students will rotate through the cafeteria with social distancing. Some schools don't have the time in the day to do that because there are more students in those schools. So we are rotating students who will be eating in the cafeteria. We'll have a cafeteria schedule and a classroom schedule. And those principals have developed those schedules so that we limit the number of students in the cafeteria at any given time. So that's kind of the scenario of what we're looking at for the cafeteria. And we'll be sanitizing, we found a sanitizer today that is a 45-second kill time that we'll be using to sanitize the tables between each group coming in and out.
I met with Dr. Cummings today at Coffey High School, and we talked about the feeding patterns out there and how they will be spacing students out and using some of the outside areas to allow students to eat and such as that. And we also talked with Ms. Berry at the middle school yesterday. And she is planning for outside activities as far as eating and such as that to help keep the students isolated as much as possible and socially distanced as much as possible during the feeding times. Daily staff health screening, we started that process this summer. Each morning when we come into work now, we fill out a screener, it's online. When you clock in on your computer, you go into the computer on the Google Doc and fill out the questionnaire and the screener. out the questionnaire and the screener. We also have thermometers. Each school has thermometers, and they will be tempting their staff and also tempting students. So, we will have thermometers to do those things and screen students and staff. Masks, we talked about allowing masks. The discussions we've had is not mandating masks at this point, but allowing them. So, that's what we have at this point. Sanitizing workplace classrooms, we've already discussed, we'll be sanitizing. We've got lots of supplies. We'll have staff to make sure we're sanitizing classrooms and workplaces. Transportation, we're mounting hand sanitizer dispensers on the buses. We'll have plenty of hand sanitizer on the buses for the children to use. We've got sanitizer backpack sprayers after each run with the bus. They'll go through the bus with the backpack sprayer, we disinfect it and disinfect the buses. Masks on the buses, of course, our, our drivers and such will be providing PPE for them to make sure that they can have a mask on and that they're protected. Virtual field trips, we'll probably be doing more virtual field trips and such as that as we discussed in the budget session last month for budget reasons and such as that will be limited field trips, but also for, for safety reasons. Food service, social distancing, limit students in the cafeteria, breakfast, lunch in the classrooms, no salad bars, no self-service, no keypads that students used to have to punch their number in. We won't be using those keypads anymore. So, no-touch service. Wellness, we'll have daily health screening for all staff, daily temperature checks, questions. You see the picture of the little thermometer over there, the no-touch thermometer? We've got approximately 100 of those on-site. We're distributing those on the campuses. So, we've got a bulk of thermometers. And we also have 10,000 masks that we've ordered, and we have around 6,000 on-site here tonight. And we've got 4,000 more that are on the way. So, we'll have 10,000 masks by the start of school so that we can supply those to our, our staff as needed. School-based health screenings for students. Our nurse, Ms. Kathy Cole, she's been involved with this planning from the very start, and she is working closely with the Department of Public Health and following their guidance. And we've been in communication almost daily with those groups to get guidance on this. Establish procedures for nurse visits. They'll be establishing procedures for what they will do with students in regards to go into the nurse. So, the Coffey County Schools will remain focused on instructional remediation, instructional growth, and safety for students as we continue to plan and assess beginning in the 2000, 2021 school year. So, the parents I've talked with are ready to get their students back in school, and we're ready to get them back to school. So, that's our plan at this point.
The, the, like, the daily temperature check, how are we doing that now? Everybody walks in the door, we got somebody standing there, or a teacher doing a classroom? How does that work?
I, we hadn't really finalized that part yet. As far as up here, we check ourselves right now. But as far as the masks, for what we have to check in school starts, we haven't really...
That was just getting, that's why I was wanting to know, you know?
There's a couple different approaches to that, encouraging parents to check the temperature before they come, then, then checking at schools. A lot of it's going to depend on the side, different sites. We'll have different techniques that they use. But that'll be part of the screening.
Parents checking the temperatures before they leave. They don't have nobody to babysit. They can be 105, but ain't got nobody to keep them when they send them on the bus.
Well, we will have the, the temperature gauges at school too, and we'll be checking temperatures.
That's what, I guess that's my question. We're going to be catching them coming in the building. So, like you said, one gets on that bus, gets off the bus, we're going to catch them right there. Or is he going to get to the classroom to sit down and 20 minutes later?
Too late when they get on that bus?
I think each school is going to have a, may have a little bit different plan. At a West Green where they have 350 students, they may temp every one of them as they come in the door. At, at our Larnes or schools, they may have to temp them throughout the day. So, it's just going to depend on the size.
I don't know what to say.
I think it won't mess with them. If they get on the bus, it's too late then.
Yeah, bringing it to the school, too late. I have just the best at having temperature gauges on the bus and, and having some monitors there to take these temperatures because once they get on that bus and take it to the school, it is absolutely too late.
That has been discussed as far as temping them before they get on the bus. And I was in a meeting yesterday, and it was discussed, temping them as they get on the bus. And if, if one of them has a fever, then they would be given a mask and they would be put in a special seat on the bus where they would stay until we get them to school because you couldn't turn them around and send them back home because, like you said, mama may be going to work. And so, we will have plans for that.
Yeah, it's still dangerous there to still put them on that bus and knowing they running 105 temperature. And now, all the children are infected, you know? When, um, it might be easier that, yeah, call somebody to come get them over. That bus waiting until they get there or something.
Yeah, that, that could be a plan.
Yeah, just let that bus be running like to school or anything than to put that child on that bus with 100 and some temperature because even with, you don't single ply it in the seat, it's still contaminating, you know, everybody else.
Yes, ma'am. Have an activity bus on, on call, and if we get one with a temp, then the activity bus goes and gets, that's a thought. Some of those details.
It's a lot of work, and, you know, of course, it's a lot of work in what we do now on our job, but, you know, it's necessary.
Yes, ma'am. We'll look at, at that model. Work on temping them before they get in the building.
See what kind of come up with.
Yes, sir.
Well, if you temp them on the bus, then you temp them, take them drop off if there's a kid around there.
Yeah, yeah.
And then you catch them before they go in the building. They hang out the cafeteria 20 minutes before school starts. They hang out in the buses. And they, you know, when they come in the building, I tell you, they're not going to I guess a parent drop off pretty easy to tell they can come back and pick it up. But now, a bus deal, I don't know, you have to work something out with that if you got an activity bus or how you do that. My point is being, you know, every day making school, nobody had a temp that morning at least. I think that can come and get to the classroom and sit down. You know, some kids are going to run in there and not see anybody until they get in the classroom. Some kids are going to be, you know, they're going to get early, they're going to hang out with buddies, they're going to do this, you know? They've been around 30 people before they went to the classroom again. Just trying to find a way to catch them before that.
Yes, sir. We will, we will certainly work towards temping them before they get in the building. It sounds, it sounds like the, the direction forward would like to go. That's where we'll go.
We got a doctor in here on hand. She have been in advise for that? Dr. McClure, will, will, have you got any advice on that?
I'm actually just a nurse. I'm actually just a nurse with a doctor in education.
Okay.
But I totally, if I, if I can speak.
Yes, ma'am.
I totally agree with Ms. Wilkerson. Once they get on that bus, you know, there's always that risk of contamination because we don't know what is on their clothes, we don't know what they're going to touch. So, yeah, I think we definitely need something, some plan in place to ensure the safety of the other people's children.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I think, I think one thing that's got to be an integral part of this whole thing is, is communicating with our families, the expectations. You know, school's not going to be the same. It's not going to move at the same pace. You know, production facilities all over the country, whether it's a restaurant or retail or manufacturing, they, they've had to slow down a little bit. They've had to take a little more time, make a little more room, be a little more accommodating. You know, but, but, I mean, I know it's difficult. I've been a parent with a sick child and, and got to be at work and got to find some help and, you know, lean on family or call students up or whatever. But it's, um, part of this conversation is going to be, there's some things that we need to notice at home before we even get going to school, you know, that, whether they have a temperature at school. I mean, even before all this, we don't really want this, you know, we don't want sick kids at school, we don't want sick employees at school. But, you know, I think the days of, of sucking up and temping down, we might just need to kind of take a, a deep breath and, and like I mentioned to you before, we, we're going to have to be accommodating on some of our, some of our things. You know, and, and having the, having the hybrid fallback might be, you know, something to, something to help with that. But, uh, but, yeah, they definitely don't need to be on the bus sick, you know? But they also don't need to be in a car drop off sick. Doesn't matter how they get to school, it's, they don't need to be even on the way to school if, if we're not well. And that, that goes for everybody, the staff and everybody else in the world. We're just going to have to make some, some exceptions on the fly, you know? About to, about to share stuff, especially, you know, with some of these policies that we got, whether it's attendance or tardiness or things like that. Hopefully, we get some waivers on the testing. It might be quite the, you know, the drumbeat to get things done without, without being a little accommodated, so.
That's right. Well, we just ordered some additional thermometers two days ago. So, we'll have thermometers, we'll, we'll, our plan goal, plan will be to temp them then before they get on the bus and temp them when they get out of car riders. That's got to be the motive of operation. All right? All right, the school startup, is there any more, any more questions, concerns about that?
Are the, are the three sets of plans that you've got, is that something we're going to publish publicly prior to? I mean, this is kind of a summary that we've looked at, but...
Yes, sir.
Imagine there's some detail out there that, that our, our parents need to know about.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to push out more information as we move into July. Our plan was to roll out a broad, uh, plan tonight, update the board that we do have three plans. The focus was going to be the traditional student-in-school model, and then the others or contingencies. We're hoping we can start school, but y'all know how the conditions have been. If we had to go virtual, we'll be prepared to go virtual. But yes, sir, we'll be pushing out much more information when we come back in July. All right. Are there any other, this is good conversation?
Okay, this is a good start. We got to have a plan. I think we're on the right track.
Yes, sir. All right, the, uh, next item on the agenda is audience participation. All right, the first person on the list is Ms. Victoria Watt. And I met with Ms. Watt last week, and Ms. Watt's here to talk to the board tonight. I do want to read a statement. "I will review our board policy. Citizens of the community have the express right and are encouraged to attend meetings of the board. The following regulations are adopted to preserve the orderly pursuit of business of the Board of Education and provide proper opportunities for legitimate and objective discussion. Board meetings are public meetings and are not meetings of the public. However, a citizen may request the opportunity to speak at the appropriate time regarding any issue included in the agenda and be recognized to speak regarding issues which are not on the agenda. Persons desired to address the board shall submit prior to the meeting a written request stating their name, address, topic about which they wish to speak. Chairperson will determine whether it is in the interest of the board to allow the request. Persons who request the opportunity to speak must be recognized by the chairperson before attempting to address the board. Should the chairperson recognize the request, a time limit may be set for the presentation. And if there are numerous requests to address the board on the same subject, the chairperson may select representatives to speak on each side of the issue. However, the following steps in the order below shall be taken to resolve any problem or issue. One, individuals are expected to contact superintendent or designate an effort to secure a satisfactory resolution to a concern prior to its referral to the board. Two, if not resolved, first step one, the person may ask to appear on the agenda of the Board of Education, work session, meetings, which precedes the next regular board meeting within the timeframe of this policy. Each individual will be given five minutes to address the concerns. If a group is present, and there is more than one spokesperson, a maximum of 10 minutes shall be allowed. If the item under discussion cannot be resolved, the matter will be tabled for further study and the citizen informed of any subsequent actions taken to resolve the problem. When the board receives a request for special action, the board chairperson may seek a motion and conclude action during the regular board meeting, or may elect to defer the matter to the superintendent for further study and schedule action at the next regular meeting of the board. The board will not hear oral complaints regarding school personnel except in the manner provided for elsewhere in the policies and regulations. Also, the board may refuse to hear persons who have previously appeared before the board and presented issues which have addressed, have been addressed or being addressed. These regulations are not designed to restrict scheduled appearance of citizens who have regular business with the board and whose presentations are provided in the agenda. Participation by employees and their representatives is guided by the personnel policies and regulations, except of course, that all employees have the right to attend board meetings in the manner as all other citizens. Recognition of individuals who are not citizens of the school community is determined by the chairperson. All persons seeking to object and speak to the board or to address the chairperson and may direct questions or comments to board members or other officers of the school system only upon approval of the chairperson. Members of the board and superintendent may have the privilege of asking questions. Any person who addresses the board, questions shall be answered by the chairperson or referred staff members present to reply to those questions, which require timely examination. They'll be referred to superintendent for consideration later response. And that's board policy. BCBI, there's also a summary on the back of the agenda that pops. So, at this point, Ms. Watt?
All right, good evening, everyone. Good evening. So, this was actually the perfect segue into what I wanted to talk about. We're, we're talking a lot about the renovations that are happening at the school, but we need to really talk about fixing what's happening in our classrooms. And so, I'm sure by now most of you have read the call to action letter that I sent to the Board of Education. You can find it on Facebook, and I also brought in a hard copy on Monday and came back and had a meeting with the board. So, one of my biggest pushes, and I'm going to go through the, the urges that I, that I list in my call to action letter. A race, so, a racial diversity and sensitivity training is what currently happens. I'm aware that this training is online. An online training about race in a school that the teachers are predominantly white, that's a problem. I know you know it's a problem. You can mute that training, ask, walk away, come back and answer those questions correctly, and you've done the work. But the, the way our children are treated inside these classrooms does not reflect this training being incorporated with fidelity. And so, I argue that it is not enough to simply have a racial diversity training. We must move towards being anti-racist because not being racist is not enough. There is a lack of black and brown teachers inside this school system. There is a lack of black and brown teachers inside this school system. That is a problem. Our children are not represented. The people who teach them, they're pushing them out of the classroom. So what we need to move to is anti-racist training for our teachers, all teachers, all teachers. I'm an educator in Washington DC. Every school year, I've sit through professional development on racism. My school demographics are 100% black. I still learn how to not be racist towards my students and just anti-racism and breaking down these systems. There's no reason why a school system with predominantly white teachers should not be learning anti-racist training when they're teaching black and brown children. If we say, if we wanna argue that this is implemented with fidelity, we wouldn't see the things we see on social media from our teachers. That's not sensitivity. So what we need to move forward with is culturally responsive teaching trainings and anti-racist trainings. I also argue in my letter and in my petition to ban paddling in the school system. I come from a PBI school, I'm very familiar with the model. Paddling, I get that it's optional, but it still sends the wrong message to our children. It's also very lazy of our teachers and our school system to even offer it as an option when we should be looking at restorative justice programs for our students and practices. Because a lot of teachers argue with me, well, do your kids throw chairs? Absolutely. But when my kid throws a chair, my question is, why does she throw a chair in her classroom? What is the relationship with the teacher? We're making kids do the heavy lifting in this school system, and that's not fair to them, they're children. So, we need to implement this whole school, not just in the classroom, but by neglecting to explicitly address the roles of systemic racism in this county, because a lot of the ideologies, the practices, and the systems in this county are largely rooted in white supremacy and enslavement. That is a problem. This school demographics are not 100% white. We must dismantle all of this before the upcoming school year, because I get the, I get all the time we're working on it. Now, if I said, let's bring rugby to Coffee County, we can work on that. But if I say, let's address race, we don't work on that, we fix that, we fix that immediately. So it is not enough to be working on it, and it is extremely lazy to just keep saying we're working on it, because we met on Monday, and I, from Monday to Thursday, I've talked to numerous educators, I've talked to numerous students in the system. Everyone sees the problem, and I know, I know Dr. Lee, she told me, well, I haven't heard complaints. Who are you asking? And also, what teachers are gonna speak up? We know job security is an issue. Y'all cannot reprimand me so I am able to say these things. So moving forward, like I list, I require that all, I urge you all to use your power to stop perpetuating this violence against our black and brown students. I require all Coffee County faculty and staff to attend anti-racist training, remove any Confederate flags and ban them from the premises, incorporate a black curriculum, a black history curriculum into every social studies and history class, and require humanities teachers to also teach books by black and Latinx authors. Create a five-year diversity plan with strategic milestones that will increase diversity within the Coffee County school system, and lastly, ban paddling in all schools. Thank you.
I want to, uh, address that, um, about the teacher, um, um, you know, do our school represent this kind of stuff with allowing our teachers to put this kind of stuff on Facebook? You know, that was the problem that I had with you, Dr. Lee. I sent you this message. Only thing I got from you is, thanks for sharing. Now, is this gonna be on the investigation for two or three years? You know, what are we doing? We seeing a lot of this now on the news in every city locally about teachers are putting racial discrimination things on the websites, and they are getting punished for it. But here in Coffee County, where you say there's no problems, I've heard the same thing from Dr. Lee's as well. Uh, X is over and over again. I've been on the board for a year and a half. Everybody in here on the board know that this has been one of my questions, one of my problems, one thing that I've been at trying to, um, rectify, this diversity. You know, this racial disparity here. You know, not hiring no blacks to represent our black children. And now we have ch- teachers that are so bold that they would get on the book and put this kind of stuff that is justified to kill a person alive, where everybody sees this and think that it's okay that he dies. Never did she put on there that the officer, his record was longest the man that he killed. And it's bad that we will sit here as employees, as a superintendent, as board members and go along with this kind of mess. It's bad. And it's bad that you didn't even want nobody to come here and speak on this. Now, when there's a problem in this black community, which it has been since I've been here and before I came, and that was one of my reasons that I wanted to get on this board, because there are problems here that we refuse to acknowledge. Now, when you say that there's no problem, that, you know, this school is going well, like she says, who are you asking? You're not asking us. I've been telling you that we are unhappy. Blacks do not get jobs here, our children do not get treated right here, and I don't even get treated right here. I've been plum bashed out, blocked out from anything that I'm talking to you about. And you are the captain of the ship, and you let these teachers do our children like this, even do the parents like this, 'cause one of these articles, she directed it to your people, your parents, and this directed at us. So who looks bad? Dr. Lee, you. You putting up with this mess. You look like you just as racist as she is. You could've said, because it's bad that you said you investigating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Peter Reverend, ready for...
Dr. Lee, school board members, good evening. I know that this has been a full challenge for you as a district. You've worked tirelessly to overcome challenges. As a grandparent, I appreciate your support for our students during this pandemic. However, we are yet in another moment of heightened racial awareness in America. While we collectively mourn the murder of our black Americans and navigate the path forward, it is absolutely critical to consider the impasse of these traumatic modern events and their direct connection to black American history with students of all races. Not only do we need to address the emotional state of student and staff, but also make changes that create real positive impact on our students' lives and collective futures. I, Reverend Rudolph Porter, pastor of Shallow Mission Baptist Church, as a concerned community member with grandchildren in this school district, am calling on the Coffee County school system to ensure that there is a safe learning environment for every student. It has been too many years since America has been addressing race, anti-racism, and inequality, and I am disappointed in the lack of efforts by the district's faculty and school board to take deliberate anti-racist actions within board and academic communication with parents, students, staff, and faculty. To be clear, ignoring the injustices of widespread normalized racism and intolerance of others or simply making a statement is not an option. Science and research has proven time and time again that children have learned racial bias in facial recognition by three months of age. Black children as young as three years of age have been shown to have significantly lower self-esteem based on their own identification of skin color. Dr. Kenneth Clark and his wife, Dr. Mamie Clark, in the 1940s, the dog, dog test has also been linked to lower academic achievement. Black students are significantly more likely to receive discipline resulting in removal of classrooms, suspensions, expulsions, referrals to law enforcement, and more than their peers, and has been directly linked with, linked to incarceration rates. Accountability is one of the only known factors that lead to behavior changes in people who occupy positions of power. As a K through 12 educator, you are a trusted leader, mentor, and role model to countless students who will grow up to be the next generation of America. We expect you to teach and lead by example, exhibiting kindness, provide resources, and be a safe space for students. From here on, anything less will be considered failing to do your job. Talks about race can be challenging, but we must turn silence into dialogue. These conversations are not reserved only for students of color, but for students in predominantly white schools too. You are equally responsible for helping our students build their capacity to understand and confront racism as well as contribute to society where peace and justice prevail. What steps will you take today to provide parents with the resources needed to guide these conversations with students at home? What steps will you take today to serve the black and people of color students in our schools? If not now, Coffee County Board of Education, when? If not here, in Coffee County, where? And if not you, who?
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, this is not my first time at this podium, and I have looked at your faces before the same exact way. It really disappoint me. There were so many questions that these two just came up here and asked. There has not been a comment. There has not been one comment from anyone up here. I don't know if you understand what is community. Community is a group of people that fellowship with one another. I have not seen y'all at my birthday parties, I have not seen y'all at my family reunions, no one up here, except for you, but I have not seen y'all fellowshipping with us. The only time that I have seen anyone in this boardroom fellowshipping with me was when I went to the unity prayer. I walked to the unity prayer. I'm a community member in Coffee County that walked to meet you. When are we gonna meet halfway? When we're gonna fix this together? When someone's going to speak on what's wrong? When you're gonna go back and look into the emails that say racial slurs about other teachers? When you're gonna go back and look at the first grader that has been sitting in your alternative school from September to December because you was unable to accommodate Ms. Jowers with a constraint room for someone who had ADHD? I am highly upset at this school system for receiving Title I funding, receiving Title II funding, receiving Title VI funding, and understanding that there's budgets in place that is giving salaries to teachers, not in my community. They're not, they're not my family, they're not people that I work with, live with, not even the whites that I work with or live with, not the blacks. I looked at the disparity rates today. I saw the racial disparities, and it's not just black people that are being racially dispaired against. And you wanna know why? Because I looked at West Green, I looked at Ambrose, I looked at each individual school in different territories and saw who was the majority in that area. And the majority in one area was white that was mistreated. The majority in one area was Mexican that was mistreated. There was a majority in one area that was black, in another area that was black, in another area that was black, and nobody spoke about it. Nobody act like it exists. And that upsets me, because we're receiving funds to keep kids in school, not, not an alternative school, y'all. I have a medical condition called ADHD. As an adult without medicine, without prescribed doctors. I understand that mother who sees that child running up and down, up under benches everywhere, she, that child pulled someone's hair, and then you act upon an IEP for that student? No, that's not how we work. We work before something happens. This is your time to work before something happens. I don't wish nothing bad on Coffee County, and I hope you don't either. They need us. If they need, okay, in, okay, we gonna talk about the invisible, um, drugs, the invisible virus, the invisible things that we've been up here talking about. We was able to set, set everything aside, he said, let's stick it out, let's tough it, there's something called COVID-19, well, there's something else called racism. That's a virus that we have to talk about too. If we was able to pause and talk about COVID-19, kids getting on the bus, um, measuring what their temperature is, why we cannot stop now and talk about racism? Is that something, we can't say black people and white people in the same room? That's what we are. I'm proud of being black. There's nothing wrong with being black. I have so many struggles because I'm black, but every time I take one step forward, but how many children know exactly how to step forward without learning as an adult? When they become an adult, that's when they learn how to take one step forward, because they gotta pay a bill, because they got survival mode on their mind. But as a child, you don't know anything about racism, you just know that somebody is bullying you. Somebody is making you sit into a corner because you don't know what medicine that you need. You have not been mentally diagnosed. You don't know exactly where to turn to because you're hungry. It's not about nobody in this room, it's about them children that sits in them chairs. And I'm highly upset with Coffee County school system. I expect to hear something from everyone, please, by the end of the day, because the only thing that I'm focused on is documentation beats conversation. I'm sick of talking. If y'all willing to work with me on proposals, we can talk about that. But anything else, there's nothing else to say but push paperwork. Thank you.
And I just wanted to add to that. I looked at some facts on this, uh, black and white issues that I called and asked for that I couldn't get, because I was told that I did not have access to any of these records. But we found out that you have, um, schoolwide, ninety-something percent of black children that is being exposed, expelled, expulsion. It's ninety-some percent of the blacks versus to zero percent of the whites. Now, this is something that we found out, so, is it, black children are that much better? Are they that much worse? Because you have all of these white teachers that are calling the parents for the white children, but they calling the police for our children.
School to prison pipeline.
You can go to the alternative school and you see nothing but black children there. You got a few white children at the alternative school... You got a few white children at the alternative school, but what I got, uh, two, three percent white children there versus all of these black children that are put over there at the alternative school to keep them from being around. Now, I have a white, a lot of white teachers that have called me, and I've told you this over and over again, but you don't wanna talk to your teachers. You don't wanna talk to nobody. You satisfied with what everybody say, everything is running good here. It's not, I asked you for the, let us get anonymous letters so they can tell you about you, Dr. Lee. Then you don't wanna hear. You don't want nobody to talk to you. You don't even wanna listen to this meeting about what is going on, this racism that is going on in this school system. You don't wanna listen.
Let me say something. I do wanna listen, and I'm listening to everybody, and I appreciate what's being said, and I love all children. So I, I don't, don't, I got into education as a teacher to teach black students, white students, all students. So don't, don't tell me that I don't love kids and that I don't, I'm not in this for the right reasons.
I didn't tell you that you didn't love them. I say you didn't wanna listen.
Well, that, that's not true.
Okay, now that you wanna listen, all right, you pulled out your, you know, your public participation, you know, rule thing this time. I've been here a year and a half, and I, I finally heard about this, the first meeting that we had when blacks came in to talk about what is going on in the school system. But beforehand, everybody can come in and talk and say what they wanna say, and y'all, you know, sit up and listen, everybody, you know, in good attendance. But even when I spoke, when I speak, everybody got to wash their shoes off, you got to bend down, I mean, the body language speaks volumes that you don't wanna hear what we have to say. But you need to check these facts out. I'm the only one that always had to have a police report when I come in with anything. Tell you, you got to have facts. That's not right. Everybody else can bring a paper towel in and wash their nose with, with something and give it to you, and you open it up and take care of business. But I was the only one that needed a police report. And you know this is facts. So I wanna work with everybody, but I wanna be treated right too. I recognize racism here myself, what I'm going through. But my skin is tugging at. I got to stay here to try to look out for what you call my people. We need to look at these facts on why all of these black children at this alternative school, why all of these black children are getting kicked out of school, and why these teachers have the boldness to say what they wanna say. I recommend that you get rid of these teachers that got all of these nerves to talk about this racism boldly and say, "I don't care what the world thinks." Thank you.
I apologize, I can't read the first name. Ms. Vickers.
Tawana Vickers. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am a resident of Warner Robins, Georgia, and an alumni of Coffey High School. And somebody will say desperate measures, desperate times calls for desperate measures. And when my community call, I come. I left this community twenty-three years ago, you are my classmate, and I have given back to this community for twenty-three years. So I have a vested interest in this community. I am sad to be sitting here today, to be standing here today, to have witnessed, um, all the blatant racism that's going on in what I call my community. Today, in Tifton, Georgia, a similar instance, incident was resolved, similar to what we have here in Coffey County. The same type of issue, I've never met you, so, but this is not my first rodeo. This is my first time here in front of this board, but this is not my first rodeo. I've been marching for a long time, okay? And I'm a successful black woman, and I'm happy to be here to represent black people, okay? But I work with all people every day of my life. I work with all people, and I work way over them, okay? In Tifton, Georgia, there was a employee that felt that they needed to, um, do the same thing that this, these Coffey High School teachers have done, or middle school teacher have done, and blast their feelings regarding the African-American, um, experience, which you don't know because you wouldn't know unless you're African-American, um, voice it on social media. But the difference in Tifton, Georgia, and what happens here that I saw that, that gave me a glimpse of hope is that first, there was a press release, released to say that we're gonna investigate the matter. Everybody is due, due process. Just because a person is accused, you shouldn't just go ahead and do it. I understand that. But everything should warrant an investigation. And the community have the right to be communicated to, and they communicated to the community. No, not in details, we know about HIPAA law and all of that, but enough to say we will check into it. Today at noon, that employee, which by the way was a nurse's practitioner, was terminated because you don't get to be an educator, a role model, in these prestigious positions that the community look up to and embody racism at the same time. You don't get to be a teacher and a bully at the same time. If you wanna do it at home, you do it at home, but you will not do it to our children. Not today, not tomorrow, not anymore. I am not tired, I am exhausted. And when are we gonna get sick and tired of being sick and tired? I didn't come with just problems, bored, I came with some solutions also. I got skin in the game. I wanna be a part of the solution, but when do we ever start working on it? Can you answer that, sir? You're the leader, right?
Yeah, we are constantly working on these issues.
Are, are you getting any type of resolve? I just, can you talk back to me? It would help.
We are, we are committed to working on these issues and working with all of our students and all of our parents and all of our community and all of our staff on these issues. And, and we are gonna do right by our students, and we're committed to that.
And what's your definition of doing right?
We're gonna love them, we're gonna teach them, we're gonna take care of them. If they're hurt, we're gonna sue them and we're gonna, we're gonna treat them. If, if they've got problems at home, we're gonna send social worker to try to help the family with the problems. If, if they've got learning issues, we're gonna work with them on their learning issues. We're gonna do the things we need because when they're with us, we're in loco parentis. That means we have to treat them just like we would treat our own children, and that's what we do.
Are we gonna hold anybody accountable for their actions?
We do, yes ma'am.
And do we communicate it or no?
We communicate what we can.
All right, I'm, my, my time is up, but I have a list here that I would like to present to the board. So I kinda talk, talk through my time, but I have a list of items here that I would like to present to the board, and I would like to schedule a follow-up meeting. Okay? Is that okay? All right, thank you.
I guess I'm the only one to have anything to say or any, um, questions or whatever because I'm the only one that's heard up here. I, I assume, I don't know, but I'm the only one that really has personal feelings in this because I am black, and I have been witness racism, I have been a part of, you know, racism. I, yeah, but anyway, when, when we were offered to hire counselors, y'all thought maybe it would be better to hire deans to continue to beat up on our children because our children are the ones that, that are getting written up. Our children are the ones that are going to the office. So you, you wanna hire more deans to beat up on our children. Well, we needed the counselors, somebody to talk to. We might, some of our children might have problems that they're coming to school with. And it would help if we had somebody that might wanna, uh, uh, might be concerned about what they're going through, what they left home with. You know, we don't need nobody to do something no more. We, we done had enough of that. We been stomped on too much. Y'all knee been on our neck all our lives. Get your knee off our neck, we can't breathe because you're not allowing us, no educators in this system. Tell y'all don't wanna hire nobody black here? Who?
Ma'am.
Oh, I thought you said something. But anyway.
I did.
What you saying?
I did.
What, what?
Okay, let's, let's.
Like I said, we don't, don't wanna hire nobody, no blacks here. We need to hire somebody. Our children need to see blacks at our school. And this is what I get all the time.
Ms. Wilson, let me, let me tell you this.
Your body language.
Let me ask.
Don't wanna listen to what I got to say.
Listen, listen to what I have to say. We hired from, from August of two thousand and nineteen until now, we've hired eight administrators with educational leadership degrees, all right? These were positions that they had to have, an educational leadership degree as an administrator. We hired eight of those, four of them were African-American, and four of them were white. So don't sit up here and tell me we're not hiring any African-Americans.
What's the retention rate? What's the retention rate?
All right, listen.
You, you said, where, where the hell?
Hold on just a second. Let's, let's start over back and forth.
Okay, you saying you have some African-American administrators. I know most of them have to leave from here in order to grow. Now, you know, it was, it wasn't none at no schools just, uh, a few days ago.
Well, I'm stating facts.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Paul Tep, you got two minutes, please.
Good afternoon, Dr. Lee, board members. I was not in here at the beginning, so I don't know what the rules or regulations you were, you were saying. So if I, um, say something that I shouldn't say, please stop me correctly.
Pretty much, just, you, you got five minutes, don't talk about personnel, things like that.
What do you mean, don't talk about personnel, don't say anything?
I mean, don't say anything that people's name is.
Okay, okay. My name is Sal Topp. I work with Coffey County's school system. I'm president standing before you as State of Georgia NAACP Education Chair, also as the Coffey County Branch Fifty-One Eighty-Four NAACP President and for the community. I will be discussing two concerns today. Teacher George Floyd issue on Facebook, and school to prison pipeline. We have to deal with these issues. First concern, some of our citizens of Coffey County are concerned about the climate that we live in and the inappropriate behaviors of some of our educators. As you're well aware, of an incident that happened with one of our teachers. You were notified about that issue. To our knowledge, in the community, you've done nothing to correct that issue. That is something that needs to be dealt with. It's an issue that happened, you can't change it, you can't fix it, but you can do us right, ethics-wise. We all, as teachers, have ethics. The packet that I gave you, it has ethics, it has some highlight stating where that teacher was ethically wrong. She needs to be written up, she needs to be fired or whatever has to happen to make it right, that the community feels something has to happen. You listen, and I've listened, meeting after meeting, and I've experienced some of the same things myself because you in that packet, you have that copy of that also. So I had to deal with discrimination. So it's time for us as a school system to get past this, to deal with it, and to show the public and the people we're not gonna stand for at Coffey County's school system. We need to embrace it like we embrace football. In that, we love Friday Night Football. So we need to do that to make sure that something happens. This community is asking for her resignation effective immediately, but now, the board needs to take action to do what they need to do to rectify, to make this situation right. Second concern, school to prison pipeline. We as a community and a school system, we must dismantle the school to prison pipeline as it stands with zero tolerance, which we have in our school system. We have to, we have some teachers and administrators that are not culturally competent, and some staff members that are not racially literate to do an equitable job. This type of behavior, um, is contributing to the school to prison pipeline. Statistics, this is lagging data, CHS twenty, uh, nineteen. Enrolled was fourteen oh four. Students for, um, was eight, for the school systems, eighty-five oh three. Blacks, thirty-one point four percent of the population. Whites, forty-five point two. Hispanics, nineteen point five. Disciplinary occurrence, fifty point, fifty-nine point nine are African-Americans. Whites, twenty-four point four. Hispanics, thirteen point three. Expulsion, sixty, off of the bus, sixty point nine. Whites, twenty-eight point one. Expulsion of blacks, um, so I mean, suspension off of bus and expulsion of blacks is ninety-two point nine. There were not any, only, therefore whites at all, no exposures. Hispanics, seven point one. All of this comes off of the dash. Everybody familiar with the dash, because that's what we use as a school system to get you data. This is not trunk of data, this is data coming off the dash, straight from the dash. Uh, in school suspension, fifty-four point one percent blacks and, um, twenty-seven point eight percent whites. How do we resolve these issues? Hire qualified African-American teachers, administrators. I'm willing to be on a board, any type of committee that you have behind me, I'm willing to be on it. But we need to hire African-American teachers. Implement racial literacy education programs which emphasize racial literacy development. Our teachers need that. Replacing zero tolerance policies with restorative justice. Let me go and get these numbers, I have to skip because my time is just about up. But our vision and our mission is equitable and exit education for every student. We're not doing that. We're not giving that to everybody. At high school, we only have three African-American teachers, two assistant principals, and one principal. At Westside and Nippos, we don't have any African-American teachers or administrators. So imagine this, if your child had attended school that had all African-American teachers and all African-American administrators, or your grandchild, how would you feel? Because that's what those students that go to, um, West Green or Nippos have to feel. They don't have not one African-American teacher nor administrator. That's a problem. Most of the schools do not have, well, one or two African-American teachers. You don't have any other African-American principals at any school. You just hire one in middle school, assistant principal, that's it. That's not right. That's not fair. Scientists say brown and black children do better when they have a teacher that's brown and black in front of them. That's that. You have that in your packet. You have the statistics in your packet to tell you that. Last thing, Rosa Parks says, "To bring about a change, you must not be afraid to take the first step." We will fail. When we fail, we will fail when we fail to try. So we have to try to do what we can do to make sure these students have bright, black and brown teachers, black and brown administrators. I'm gonna give you something, and I would like to, uh, a moment to speak with you after this meeting or set up time, um, with all of y'all to go through this packet. But I'm gonna pass this around for, for your eyes only, which is public record. But this is something, when you hire, when you have African-Americans that are qualified, that comes off of PSC, but you hire, uh, some others that are not qualified, that's the PSC, or gave, giving them a provisional to do the job. So why can't you get African-Americans provision? What's the problem with getting our, um, African-American? You have a list in your packet of African-American, um, teachers that are qualified to be administrators, so you don't have to look. They're here, waiting for you to hire them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Dr. Lee, you have a lead for executive session?
Uh, I do, yes, that's right. I'll make a motion to move to vigorousation of personnel. Well, and, and I, I do wanna address the recruitment of, of African-American teachers, and that is something that we, we are committed to, and we are working on, and we are making conscious effort to recruit African-American teachers. And, and, uh, it, it's something that is happening, and I, I hear you loud and clear, it's something we need to work harder on. And we will continue to work harder on it, and we will continue to try to recruit as many African-American teachers as we can, Latino X teachers, we will recruit as many Latino X teachers as we can. So, you know, I hear you loud and clear, and, and we are committed to it, so... Uh, to discuss personnel, uh, and, uh, the, uh, employment or disciplinary actions or, or, um, personnel involved in, uh, personnel issue, and also the personnel list for hiring.
Motion, motion, second.
Second.
All in favor? Alright, we have an executive session. Uh, we have a motion to move to executive session.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Alright, we're set as a general.